I call this meeting the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. Ms. Serzak, can you take the roll, please?
Mrs. Cordasko.
Here.
Ms. Emanuel.
Here.
Mr. Fuentes.
Here.
Ms. Larson.
Here.
Mr. Nichols.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here, thank you. 3.01, certification of closed session. Do I have a motion?
I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Ms. Serzak, can you take the vote, please?
Mrs. Cordasko.
Aye.
Ms. Emanuel.
Aye.
Mr. Fuentes.
Abstained.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Mr. Nichols.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye, thank you. 4.01, approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion for approval of the agenda?
I say move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? It's moved and seconded for the approval of the agenda as presented. Ms. Serzak?
Mr. Fuentes.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Mr. Nichols.
Aye.
Ms. Cook, I'm sorry, she's not here. Mrs. Cordasko.
Aye.
Ms. Emanuel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye, thank you. 5.01, announcements, superintendent's report. Dr. Constantino?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, Jamestown High School student Alexa Halco recently earned two silver medals at the 2015 International Paralympic Committee Athletics World Championships. Alexa placed second in the 100-meter dash and second in the 400-meter race. She also placed fourth in the 800-meter T-34 Women's Wheelchair Race for Team USA. We'll be asking Alexa to come to a future board meeting to be recognized, and I will share additional honors that Alexa has earned at that time. But I wanted to take this opportunity to congratulate her and to direct viewers to Alexa's Athlete Facebook page at @AlexaHalcoAthlete, where there are videos posted of her recent races.
Thanks, sir.
Also, congratulations to the Toannau Middle School football team for winning the Bay Rivers District Championship game, and congratulations to War Hill High School's Lions Roar Theater Company. The company was named One Act Play Conference 25 Champions for the second year in a row. War Hill also hosted the events this year, and congratulations to all of those students and their teachers. And finally, a calendar alert. The War Hill Lions Holiday Bizarre Bizarre is bizarre bizarre. Sorry. Is this Saturday, November 14th, from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at War Hill High School. Admission is just $1 or a non-perishable food item for "erase the need." Those are all the announcements I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Constantino. Any announcements from board members at this time? 6.01, citizens' comments. Oh, I'm sorry.
I regret to say that, yes, in today's paper, in today's Daily Press, it was announced that Ward Ellis, former principal at Lafayette, Teacher of the Year when he was teacher at Toannau Middle School, also a principal here, died, and I'm sure many of our teachers and students remember Ward as a very giving teacher, and I'm sure he will be sorely missed.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
He was young. My age.
Even younger.
Bring 6.01, citizens' comments. We have four speaker cards tonight. Mr. Nichols?
At this point in our meeting, where citizens are invited to address the school board, those citizens desiring to speak have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. When a speaker's name is called, the speaker comes to the podium, states his or her name for the record, and directs his or her comments to the chair of the board. In order to promote a listening and respectful environment, please avoid applauding, verbal outbursts, or any other type of demonstration when the speaker is addressing the board. Personnel matters are not considered in public meetings. School board requests that all speakers refrain from making any reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. The school board's role is to listen to the speaker rather than to respond to his or her comments. Each speaker is allowed a three minutes to make his or her comments. The school board asks each speaker to respect this time limitation. Time may not be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Ms. Cordasko?
Bridgette Claycombe.
My name is Bridgette Claycombe. I'm a former special education teacher, current William &amp; Mary Law student, but I also serve as secretary for the Special Education Advisory Committee. Tonight, I speak as a citizen, and I'm concerned that the draft restraint and seclusion policy is not consistent with state and federal guidance documents on restraint and seclusion, specifically the U.S. Department of Education's Restraint and Seclusion Resource Document and the Guidelines for the Development of Policies and Procedures for Managing Student Behaviors in Emergency Situations in Virginia Public Schools, focusing on physical restraint and seclusion. Given the time constraints, I will only address two issues. First, both state and federal guidance documents stress that restraint and seclusion should only be used as a last resort. The U.S. Department of Education's Guidance Document states that restraint and seclusion should never be used, except in situations where a child's behavior poses imminent danger of serious physical harm to themselves or others. Virginia Department Guidelines emphasizes in bold letters, "Physical restraint and seclusion should be used in emergency situations when other less intrusive alternatives have failed." The draft policy uses the Virginia Corporal Punishment Statute to justify the use of restraint and seclusion in non-emergency situations, and prioritizes the need to quell disturbance and protect property over the liberty of its students, and this is not consistent with guidelines in federal and state. The school board should eliminate the broad list of circumstances allowing restraint and seclusion in non-emergency situations, and explicitly state that restraint and seclusion should only be used when a student's behavior poses imminent danger of serious harm to themselves or others. Second, the U.S. Department of Education's Restraint and Seclusion Resource Document states that parents should be notified as soon as possible following each instance in which restraint and seclusion is used with their child, ideally the same day. Currently, five days is still too long to wait for notification. That's almost an entire school week, and I just would ask that the school board add language that would say the policy, that staff and teachers should do their very best to notify parents as soon as possible. To conclude, Williamsburg James City County works very hard to implement positive behavior interventions and supports. This system encourages staff to use appropriate positive interventions to keep behaviors from escalating to the point where restraint and seclusion would even need to be contemplated. Williamsburg James City County Public School District should have a restraint and seclusion policy that upholds that initiative, and only allow for restraint and seclusion when students or faculty are in imminent danger of serious physical harm. And on the rare occasion that restraint and seclusion is needed, parents should be notified as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jennifer Hydel.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity. My name is Jennifer Hydel. I am the mother of a special needs child enrolled in this school district. I'm also a master's level counselor, and I want to address the inclusion of mechanical restraint in the current draft of the WJCC Schools Restraint and Seclusion Policy. It's of a particular concern to me, both as a parent and as a practitioner. Mechanical restraint should not be included as part of this policy and procedure. Should be noted that many districts across the country and across the state, it's a military family, we've been affiliated with many of these, and I've reviewed their policies, strictly prohibit mechanical restraint. Any restraints that are routinely used with students, seat belts, stabilization tools, would already be addressed in the IEP and are specifically excluded as per the wording in the draft. Therefore, there's really no need to include them in this policy for those reasons. Lines 89 and 90 of the draft state that this policy does not permit the use of a restraining device to limit a student's mobility when that device is not ordinarily used with the student. It's imperative that items that students use daily in their school environment to facilitate a productive academic atmosphere not be used in a punitive manner. The use of such items to restrict a child's movement in a way that deviates from that prescribed routine use of that item could lead to future undesired behavior each time that ordinarily-used device is presented throughout the course of a school day. As a parent and as a therapist, I see this type of adverse reaction not as a possibility, but a probability. So I urge the draftees of the policy and the school board to strongly consider removing mechanical restraint as a form of approved restraint. In the event that this form of restraint is allowed to be maintained as part of the policy, I urge you to consider adding a three-member review panel to be enforced any time a child is restrained.
Don't worry, that's not you. That's me.
Okay. Anytime a child is restrained with any sort of device, this ensures that both students and the district itself are protected in the event of an unfortunate occurrence, as we've seen in many cases that have become very public recently. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandra Young.
My name is Sandra Young. I want to thank the school board and Dr. Constantine for letting me have this opportunity. I want to address the building here, the new building that's going to be built here at James Blair. I have no idea whether or not this, what step we are in the process, but I'd like the board to reconsider and reassess the need for building this school at this location. This is a very poor location. On two sides, we have, we have commercial enterprise, you've got a CVS, and they're now building in Aldi's. I lived in Germany, and Aldi's is a fantastic store, and it will be very busy, and it will cause a lot of congestion here. I also know that many other citizens have been before the board with their concerns, and I share their concerns, and I'm still surprised that we're still going ahead with this. Another thing that's going to cause, I think is going to cause a problem, is the cost of the building. I understand that it was suggested that we could add to some other locations for far less money, for example, Hornsby. I also have a concern about the amount of money that was spent on an architect. Don't we own the plans for Hornsby? I know there are some issues with that building, for example, the cafeteria. I also know that there are two things that drive any school schedule, is the size of the cafeteria and the bus schedule. And with a smaller cafeteria at Hornsby, that has created problems, so that would need to be fixed if we chose to use that plan. Another thing that may interfere with the building of this new building is the requirements of VDOT. In fact, they may not be something that we can avoid because of the ingress and egress situation that already exists at this site. So I'm asking that the school board will reassess and take another look at this proposed building, and I thank you.
Thank you.
Petra Nadal.
My name is Petra Nadal. I live at 106 Indian Circle in Grove, and I would like to thank the chairman, Kelly, superintendent, Constantino, and the board for listening to me for a moment. I would like to thank Heather Cordasko for your work on the Williamsburg James City County School Board. You have worked tirelessly for our students, you have been accessible, you have listened, you have helped, you networked, you went above and beyond. When it came to school policy, your concern was for the children. We did your, excuse me, you did your research, you always went to other professionals for the newest and most accurate information and legislation, you attended meetings near and far to be informed as possible. What you were able to achieve in less than four years is amazing. I know you will be remembered for bringing Manufacturing Day to Williamsburg James City County. We were the first in the school system and the entire nation to offer this program to introduce students and their parents to the variety of career opportunities in the manufacturing industry by showing them what happens in the manufacturing plants in their own backyard. You worked with AIM and others to show them that there were many opportunities at all levels of manufacturing and to rid them of their preconceived notion that manufacturing is just an assembly line. I spoke with several of the students at the last Manufacturing Day. They were so surprised and glad to know that they could find careers, especially locally, that start right here, out of high school, with a trade school certificate, or possibly a two-year college. It's one thing to hear about manufacturing jobs, but it's totally, totally another thing to see and talk with people, to see how it's done, and to see, talk with people that were in their shoes. As I was door-knocking throughout my district, and I mean every little nook and cranny, when I was running for school board, many, many parents spoke to the issue of our schools not offering any trade classes anymore. That's a really big issue. They find that our schools are letting a whole group of children down. They are glad for New Horizons, but it's hard for many children to get to them as they aren't adequate buses to get there. The transfers, the amount of time that children had to take to go from bus to bus, excuse me, and the amount of their time that children spend getting there and back, that doesn't even speak to the issue of the ungodly hours they have to get up just to get to the bus. Two of my neighbors say their children come home too tired to function, to do homework or anything else. Heather has fought so hard to get more buses for New Horizons. I've attended or watched the school board meetings, and I'm amazed how little the school system cares about this issue. If the school system cared about all the children, you would have found a way to support Heather's efforts to get them to the New Horizons classes, as well as bringing some of them to this area itself. I feel I can speak for many parents. There are school board members here and around the country that just follow, and then there are school board members that have the courage to take the lead. You are the latter. You represented Robert's District well, and you took the time to get to know the people, their concerns, and their needs. Thank you again for everything you did.
Thank you.
No, it's not me.
7.01, discussion of proposed agenda items. Order contact for request for proposal number 168487, value engineering services for the new middle school facility. Dr. Constantino?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, value engineering ensures that each new construction project engages in a process to identify efficiencies and potential cost savings. The board has engaged with a value engineering proposal for every building that is built. Request for proposal was issued on September 23rd, and this agenda item is a placeholder item. That RFP was posted on the James City County Bulletin Board, emailed contractors placed in James City County. At the time the item was prepared, the RFP opening and interview process had not been completed, and that will be completed by the time the board meets on November 17th, 2015, and there are some staff members here that can answer your questions.
Any board members have questions?
I mean, no one else?
Mr. Fuentes?
Yeah, I'm curious. Normally, when we do the value engineering, we usually have drawings that are at a certain phase and at a certain point, like we've all thought into the design. The last time we talked about drawings, they were at a, the architect was at a point where he was still conceptual, it was very conceptual, if I remember correctly. They weren't, I don't know if we were following our process. We had a process of the different phases, but anyway, aren't we a little early on value engineering when the drawings haven't been, and the board hasn't approved any designs? Or maybe I'm, I missed something.
I think I can answer that. We're certainly not going to engage the value engineer until those drawings are at 35%. They will come to you. We're trying to stay to the timeline that we shared with the board, and we're moving toward the end of the timeline, so we're not going to value engineer something that you haven't seen. There's no question about that. It's just to make sure that we finish this process, so when the drawing, we've been on a very tight timeline, and so in order to stay on that timeline, we're pushing this a little bit, understanding that there's still drawings and board discussion that have to happen before value engineering takes place.
Okay, so we're, and that's, okay, so the timeline is that we're at the, I guess we were given something, 35% is where you're saying, we're not even at the 35%?
Do I have that right? 35%?
Yes, you're correct. 35%. So, and we're going to get the value engineers involved at the 30, I mean, that's earlier than I think we've done in the past, right?
I couldn't answer what we've done.
For when we, when we bring in value?
I think with War Hill, we came in much later.
Much later.
Much later.
And also, the Matoka, I mean, it was very close to the end, if I remember, which I'm not opposed to bringing them in early, but I just remember we got the drawings close to finish, then the value engineers came in and then kind of said, and then they, then it was redone. Anyway, so we're, you're trying to do this, the drawings aren't, the drawings aren't at the 35% mark, right? I mean, that's what you're saying?
No, not today.
Right. But we're going to engage them at the 35% mark?
Yes.
And so they're, so?
Well, engage, the architects will be back to talk with the board about those drawings as they described in their previous conversations with the board.
Right, but then, at what point do the value engineers get involved?
At the 35%. That's my understanding of how the process will work. If the board chooses a different process...
No, well, and that's why I'm trying to get educated on this here, because, you know, there's, because I, I don't know exactly when the best time is either, you know, on this, but the thought is that you bring them towards the end, and they look at the whole, you know, then they go back. Now, you know, in this area, I'll have to defer to Mr. Kelly on when the right time to bring the value engineer. I just know that typically it's more towards the end.
And I will defer to architects and engineers. As it's been explained to me, bringing a value engineer into a project at 35% avoids drawings being completed and redrawing and more time if there are significant changes or something has to be done. So I think it's, it's a work that's done in tandem, starting at the 35%. That's my understanding of it, but I am not an architect or a value engineer.
You are, you are correct, Dr. Constantino. When we met with the value engineers, they will come in at 35%, and they will be involved throughout the process, even all the way up to the 95% process. So they're going to be involved all the way through the process, even through implementation.
Ms. Larson?
Is this 35% recommendation coming to you from the architect or from the value engineer firm? Who, where are we getting that?
Previous, previous presentations of the architect to the school board, the architects have been here twice to talk conceptually and said to the board that they would be here at 35%.
With the value engineer?
And so 35% is somewhat of a starting line for the board's engagement in the drawings and the engagement of the value engineer.
And then the value engineer firm will stay with us?
Yes.
Throughout the process? So, and we could certainly talk to the architect about the pros and the cons of that, and why there's, there must be a reason for the recommendation. They must have found that in the past. Can we get some information from them?
Sure.
About why they are recommending that?
Yep.
Well, okay, so I'm a little bit confused on that, because typically, the, okay, so the, it's like quality control, the two should be separate and distinct. They, I mean, they kind of work together, but the value engineer is supposed to not get the group think of the architect, right?
You're correct.
Right. So working together is not, you're not really working together, so the, I'm not sure if the architect, the architect has certain milestones that they set, and I remember that night, I mean, it's 35%, 65, and 95, and then when the drawings are complete, and then they're never, they're never really complete. But, so, but the value engineer people are supposed to come at a certain point and kind of point out places where there's efficiencies to be made.
Correct.
So maybe 35% is the correct place, but I'm...
I think working together conjures up a picture of everybody sitting in the same room. That's, I think working together means the architects will do their work, the value engineers will separately evaluate that work.
As they go along.
As they go along.
Okay, I think I, okay, that's, and if that's, and that, and I don't recall, I really don't recall the architect, you know, if he said that, or they said that. Maybe that's a good thing, maybe make 35%. I can see value in that, and I can see value in waiting a little bit further, and anyway, that was all my question. Thank you.
Mr. Nichols?
Yeah, I was, I was thinking that the 35% would really be a good start because of what Dr. Constantino said, that if we come, if we bring them in at the end of it, there's a lot of construction, you know, opportunity to have to redraw things, and it seems to me that would be costly.
It seemed to me, and I don't, I can't speculate on the cost, it just seemed to me that it would be, it would be beneficial to the board to have the opinion of the value engineer and the architect all the way through, as opposed to getting a report from a value engineer at the end of a process and then having to deal with whatever the engineer, that, it made some logical sense to me. However, it's certainly the board's purview to make that decision.
Yeah, I would rather have them in early rather than late. That would be my preference, although my time here is diminishing.
Mrs. Cordasko?
Well, a couple of things. I know that there were some significant questions from some of the teachers when the concept was revealed previously, and I know there was some talk of having input from some groups of teachers before we moved really too heavily into this concept school. I was interested in knowing that, and I also remember just after I was first elected to the board, sitting in a budget meeting in which everybody on the board around the table was astonished that the cafeteria size had been changed without apparently them knowing it, and sending us a whole world of hurt in Hornsby. So I'm wondering, how can we avoid that happening this time, and how are these two things connected? Because it seems to me as if we are talking about two groups, really not talking together too well, and not necessarily being informed as we're sitting at the table here.
Two very good questions. First of all, to answer your first question about involvement, we did exactly what we said we would do, and that is to engage every academic area, teachers, coordinators, we've had operations people, custodians, just about everybody look and give us input, and as a result of that, changes have been made, and as a matter of fact, we have a meeting tomorrow morning to look at some of the changes based on input. The one that comes to mind is science rooms and some things that science teachers had seen and suggested that were very good suggestions. So I can, I can assure the board and get you the exact number of committees and who was on that committee. I don't have that in front of me, but I certainly can get you that. So that piece happened. And in terms of the Hornsby cafeteria or other issues in other schools that have happened over the years, again, I'm going to surmise that it seems to me that bringing, bringing a value engineer in along the way, and if a value engineer says to you, "We think you should diminish the size of your cafeteria," I think it would be better for the board to know that earlier in the process, to make a more informed decision, to allow staff to say, to come to you and say, "Here's why we recommended something this size," as opposed to the end of the process. I think some of the issues in some of our buildings as a result of value engineering, it is my understanding, because I was here for none of them, but happened, you know, some hallways that perhaps should have been bigger, some things that should have occurred. We're looking to try to avoid those kinds of issues and engage the board along the way to say, "Here are your options. Here's what a value engineer says, here's what the staff says, here's what the architect says, here's what we're going to recommend." As we always do, the final opinion and the final approval is the school board's.
And the teachers that were engaged, was that basically pick the curriculum leaders and have them pick people, or how were they, how were they engaged?
I don't off the top of my head remember how those committees were formed. I know we had curriculum leaders, I know we had teachers from the schools. I don't know who selected the teachers. I can find that out for you.
Any other comments from board members? Mr. Fuentes?
Yeah, so, and I concur that there's a, there's a, the right, finding the sweet point between, you don't want to go too late, you don't want to be too early, so, you know, if 35%, yeah, that, I mean, you can, there's a lot you can gather at the 35% mark. So my next question then is the period of performance. So, because we're not at 35% yet, like you said, so we're going to, if we award this in a week, when do, what's the schedule show for roughly when the 35% mark is?
The schedule, I believe, shows January, somewhere around January 35%. So it was, the timeline showed to, the value engineering process was September to December to align with a January, so we are planning to be back to you in January to start So we are planning to be back to you in January to start that process.
Okay, and then, and maybe to Ms. Cordasco's point about the teachers and the involvement of them, what point does that get, you know, because again, you don't want to go down, too far down the road on that, so that.
Right.
Going to be happening?
We, we've already had numerous committees. 12 is the number that comes to mind, don't hold me to that, but 12 different numbers of committees come in from different curricular aspects and to take a look and to give us their opinions of, of classrooms, access, egress, hallways, bathrooms, special education facilities. So, we've done a lot of that, and we'll continue to do that if there, if, if for some reason there's a significant change in the design or a change in the design from what we have gathered from all these groups, we certainly need their input. I think it's imperative that the people who will live there and work there have input into what that, what that atmosphere is. So, I see that as a continuous process based on what happens with the drawings and what happens with the design.
Okay, that makes sense.
Any other board member comments? I always like how you throw the 35% mark number around, and what is 35%?
I know.
Yeah, 37, 34. I, the concern I have with value engineering is that, you know, I expect my architects to be doing that, right? And so that, that I don't have to, I don't have to have another firm come in and do value engineering to take things out. But I understand it's required by code that we do this.
Yes, Ms. Burdick can answer you. Chief Financial Officer can answer that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
State code does require value engineering for projects that are valued at $5 million or greater. The county project, process requires $1 million or greater to be value engineered. So we are well above both of those thresholds.
Yeah, sure. Sure. So, and that makes sense. I mean, I guess, value engineer, second architect review, I mean, it depends on how you call it. But, but where I see the greatest life cycle issues that come into a design occur because of value engineering and making cafeterias smaller and making, you know, because we're going to go cheaper, we're going to make it, we don't need it that big today, but we needed that big two years after it's open, and, but we valued engineered it out. So I just, I just get concerned when we start talking about value engineering. So I understand, I understand getting involved 35, before 50%, just so that they can be looking at the design, understand what's happening, and, and if they bring up issues, we can, we can rework that before we get to 90% and they're ready to steal, start stamping and sealing drawings, and then they have to go back and erase a bunch of stuff. So I, I get all that, so, but, you know, it's, it's something that we have to do, it's required by codes, required by the county process, and maybe, maybe we give value on it. But before we, before we look, before we incorporate their suggestions, we need to make sure that we reviewed it, we review it from both the staff and a board level and make sure we understand what costs they're taking out, what value they're taking out of our building for the long term.
That really is the process we're trying to set up so that we all, several different sets of eyes look at this, because I don't want to value engineer a cafeteria too small.
Right.
I don't want to value engineer a hallway too small that causes congestion and irritation for kids and teachers. And I think that the staff looking at that and making recommendations and the school board understanding what it is is important.
But likewise, we don't want to make it too big, so I.
No.
I get all that.
Absolutely.
So, Ms. Manuel.
Well, I just want to say, because we're doing this in two phases, I think it's incumbent upon the school board to remember that it may look like it can be downsized in the first phase, but you're building for the second phase also. So I can see that this could be a real stumbling block if, if the board doesn't keep their eye on the ball.
Right, and make sure that we understand the final product and not the.
Not the, not the beginning product.
Not the phase one product, right. Good point. Any other comments from board members? So this comes to us to, next week, I guess you're opening bids at some point, and then we, we get to it. Okay.
I'm sorry, did, did you say the period of performance, though? I'm, I'm sorry, I thought I, I, did I ask that question?
No, I thought I answered it.
And I can't.
Apparently, I apparently didn't. My answer was that I believe that the 35% drawings would be coming to the board in January, that's the plan.
That's the start.
That was the period, that was the beginning of the period of performance, as I understood.
Right, and so then they understand, they, they, and the reason I ask is typically the cost, what the contractor, or whatever you want to call them, contractor, architect, whatever they, this firm, time is money, so that if the, if this drags on, you know, what, what is their, you know, they usually put that into their cost of what the period of performance, so I'm just, I was curious, are we talking?
Well, I think, let's just make sure that all that information is included next week so we have it, it's clear.
Yeah, right, okay.
Yeah, not to be too greedy, but I'll be greedy. I would prefer that we send something out tomorrow, email what the scope of the contract is, and, you know, Joe's period, question about the period of performance is a valid one. So, if whatever went out for the RFQ, if, I'm not sure if I'm asking for 200 pages here, but I'm, I'd like to just be able to review what we've, we've asked them to bid on with that period of performance of that is, is. So I'm hoping, I don't know, I don't know how big the RFQ was.
It was an RFP.
It was an RFP.
It was an RFP. It was, it's not, it's not large at all, we can make sure that you get those.
Yeah, if you could just send that out to us so that we can read that and before the packets come out on Thursday for next week, that'd be good.
One more question.
Mr. Fuentes?
Since now that you differentiate it between the RFQ and the RFP.
Right.
So, being an RFP doesn't, that means we don't necessarily choose the lowest bidder, correct?
That is correct.
So you have criteria then beyond that, you use certain criteria?
Yes.
And I guess you can explain that next week. I just wanted to make sure we weren't talking, talking RF, RFQ, RFP, IFP. Right, okay. Thank you.
Good. Any other comments from board members? Thank you. 7.02, adoption of policy JM restraint and seclusion of students. Dr. Constantino.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, the Code of Virginia, Section 221253, 13-7, standard 7 requires that each local school shall maintain and follow up to date policies. All school board policies should be reviewed and revised. This evening, we bring to you for the first reading, the policy JM restraint and seclusion of students. It's a new policy. We recommend the adoption of policy JM to provide requirements for staff response, and the policy has been reviewed by the Policy Committee, attorneys, principals, and CAC. And Mrs. Pujol is certainly here to answer any questions that you might have.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Constantino. Policy JM restraint and seclusion is a new policy. During the last legislative session, Virginia House Bill 1443 and Senate Bill 782 were passed requiring the Virginia Board of Education to adopt regulations on the use of seclusion and restraint in public elementary and secondary schools. This legislation went into effect on July 1st, 2015. The draft policy before you this evening was developed, starting with the Virginia School Board Association Model Policy. Following discussions with WJCC administrators, an input and feedback from the Special Education Advisory Committee, a presentation to the Board Policy Committee, and legal review, the draft policy is presented for your consideration.
More members? Ms. Manuel.
Well, one of the speakers this evening, and I was struck by the, within a reasonable period of time, and I think if I were a parent, I would like that to be as soon as possible. And I liked her suggestion of, just as soon as possible, possibly the same day if possible, but, you know, that, that kind of thing. I think you could tighten that up a bit. I would appreciate that.
Mr. Nichols?
We had two members of CAC here, speaking, and they raised some important concerns. How do we address that?
When we presented it to CAC, they provided us fairly extensive written feedback, and we reviewed that with them. Many of the items that they requested us to consider were procedural in nature, and there will be procedures in place to support this, so the policy wouldn't go into that level of detail. The number of days that are in the policy, originally the, the VSB A policy states 15 days. We discussed that with our attorneys and changed it to five days. That's for the written notice. The procedures are going to say that a verbal notice should be given as soon as possible. So the procedures will be more specific than, than the policy, it's going to be the guiding document. It will include, it will include a documentation form to note all the steps, so.
Go ahead. Jim?
Well, when I was reading the document, it seemed to me that it was referencing the fact that we, the mechanical restraints were only indicated inappropriate if it was in the IEP.
That's the only time we would use them. And, and we did discuss with our attorneys the appropriateness of putting in there. The regulations, as I said to you, the board has been asked to adopt regulations, those are not complete. They anticipate that mechanical restraints will be part of that. That is why they have recommended that we, we keep it in there.
Ms. Larson.
What about the concern about putting the child, I understand about the IEP, but using something as a, you know, to restrain them, they would normally use for just time when they need a cooling off period? And so, or some, you know, what the, what the speaker brought to our attention?
That's not our practice, and the policy does say that the folks that will be using restraints have to be trained. We use a certified program called the Nonviolent Crisis Intervention Training. We have certified trainers that train our staff to utilize that. And the physical restraint is actually the last piece of it. It focuses on de-escalation by using nonverbal and verbal redirection first, and only goes to the physical restraints if that's necessary. The training does not include any mechanical restraints.
Okay. Is, are we going to make sure that we're all on the, I mean, are we going to have staff development that goes along with, with this? And I, I mean, I'm sure that we are currently ongoing, so.
We currently have 101 staff members that are fully certified. We have 43 that are scheduled thus far for training this year. In addition, we will be reviewing all of the procedures with the, the building administrators and having them go back and review those with their staff.
Okay. And how does this policy line up? I realize that we, we've made some changes from the VSB A, but with other, with our neighboring school divisions, are, have you looked at their policies in this, regarding this, and are we in line with those, or?
We've done some review. Not all school divisions have the policies, and there was, there's conversations to whether or not to wait until the final board regulations were out. It was decided that it was best to go ahead and move forward with a policy at this time.
Okay. And I, I share the, I do appreciate you putting in the five days, and I understand that it will be in procedures, but I, I also understand why there's a little bit of a, you know, it, it, it leaves that door open for there not to be as quick follow-up as there should be, so hopefully that can be, you know, reemphasized as well.
Part of the procedures will not only include the written notification, but it will have options for follow-up, so it's not going to just be a notification.
Okay.
It's what happens next that is just as important to us, and that's going to be part of what has to be documented.
Mrs. Cordasco.
I had a couple of things. I know one of the things that we discussed, I don't know if you were at the meeting when we had the policy committee, I think it was, you were not there.
I did this one, sorry.
I think Stacio was there. One of the things I had asked about is I know we have a fairly close relationship with the James City County Police Department, and I believe that they're pretty well-versed in de-escalation in total. And I had asked if that was something that we could look into in terms of, I know we have already do some joint training with them, but one of my concerns is that sometimes, due to some of the inclusion that we have, the special education teacher may be versed in what needs to happen and maybe not the mainstream teacher as much. So I didn't know if we'd made any progress in that, but that was one of the questions that I had had in terms of, of a partnership with them. I also wondered, since we do partner with New Horizons, I know that they're primarily chartered under Newport News, but we all participate, I wonder how much of this will translate in terms of our students and their treatment that might occur down there and whether or not that's something that has been considered as well.
I can communicate with them.
Because, you know, that's, that's just one of the, one of the things. And, you know, I think the concern is that we want our staff and teachers to be safe, we want our students to be safe, we want the students who may be in a situation which they're overwhelmed to feel as if they're taken care of. And I just want to make sure that, that all of those things are actually being addressed. So that, that would be important to me to, to have those things. You know, it's, it's one of those things that we go back and forth in terms of, the demands on our teachers are high in terms of their ability to, to teach, the testing that's required, and I know that sometimes they get frustrated with the fact that there's professional development. I think it has to be tied into, to why this is important, and we have to talk about why this matters. And why, if they're in a situation where they're not feeling safe, the student isn't feeling safe, or there's, you know, God forbid, a lawsuit, everything would have been followed in a way that everybody has, has done to as much as possible the right thing without being caught off guard. So, those would be the requests that I would make.
Mr. Nichols.
The thing that would make me feel comfortable, when I read, when I read the VSB A document and it was saying the 15 days, that certainly made me uncomfortable. And I think that, you know, and I was pleased to see in our document that we went down to five, but it, it still comes to back, I think that I would rather see it as soon as possible, because it gives, it gives, it gives some weight. It doesn't necessarily mean, you know, well, I just feel, I just think, not feel, I think that, you know, saying as soon as possible gives a measure of comfort to the parents, to the public, that we are, we're being as responsible as we can in communicating the If my daughter was in the school system and she was a special needs child, I would want to know as soon as possible.
Mr. Fuentes?
Yeah, I have a few comments, and I think we're, I'm kind of sensing that we all thought the same thing about the five days versus the 15, 15 seemed too long, and I'd already crossed out within a reasonable period of time to say, just as Ms. Manuel said, as soon as possible. But I have a couple other broad questions. Well, number one, this policy clearly is not just for special ed, but for the whole general population.
Correct, thank you for clarifying that. This is for all students.
All students, if something, if for some reason, God forbid, something was to happen. The other question I have is, looking at the definitions, okay, mechanical restraint, very clear on that, mechanical is very tangible. Physical restraint is where I get a little bit confused, depending on how they use it through here. So when they say physical restraint, are they talking about an individual restraining a person?
Correct. Correct, and that's the training that we have certified trainers that provide. The training that you receive in order to be certified in those restraints is a two-day training. So it's, it's detailed, it's extensive, they practice, they have to be able to show that they're doing them in an appropriate manner that keeps them safe and keeps the students safe.
Maybe I'm not, okay, maybe, maybe I need a little bit more description on this physical restraint than the way you're talking about. I mean, it, okay, so a student, for some reason, there's, you know, reading examples of, needs to be protected from, you know, his or her own actions, so there's a fight example, right? Is that an example of physical restraint coming in?
It could be. It could be, yes, sir.
Right, so then, a teacher comes to pull them apart, is that?
There are certain ways that they're asked to approach, that they are trained to approach students, so that if they have to use a physical restraint, and again, that's a last resort, that they do it in a way that is safe for them and safe for students. And there are, there are very specific ways that they do it. There are, there are places, the ways you hold your hand, there are ways that you move your body to protect yourself and the student, and they receive extensive training on that.
Okay. And then the other question I had is, and I, and I'm not sure, it's that sentence again about the as soon as possible not to exceed five days after any use of physical restraint or seclusion. Should mechanical also be included in that? Or is there a reason why it was, you know?
Then we can include it.
Well, I'm not.
No, I mean, I just, it's the way the policy was written.
No, no, and I think.
And again, I mean, the mechanical restraint piece, as, as I said, is, is something that we don't use as a practice, so we train in physi- So we train in physical restraints.
No, I, right. And I understand that we don't, that's something we don't want to do. I'm trying to see whether it was, what words they use.
They mean VSB.
Oh, the VSB, actually, seclusion result in observed physical injury. And, okay, so that's one, that's one thing that you said, regardless of whether there's physical injury, you're going to go ahead and notify. And the only reason I've mentioned mechanical, though, I think that, and there's an exception to the mechanical right below that.
We can add that.
Where it says if it's mechanical for seat belts.
Correct.
You know, safety devices.
Correct.
You know, if you're climbing that rock wall down at, at Solano.
Go ahead. Oh, at Solano.
What's that?
Yeah, I got you.
Yeah. Then those type of restraints, obviously, those, I mean, I think that's included in the exception there. But anyway, I just was curious why the mechanical was left out. If there's a reason...
We can check on that.
Right. Thank you.
Ms. Larson?
I apologize if you answered this question, the procedures that go along with the policy. Are you working on those now, or will you expect to have them completed by the time that you'll ask us to approve this next week, I'm guessing?
Yes. They're being revised right now. We've always had a protocol for physical restraint, so we're revising those to add in the things that are now in the policy.
Okay. And included in those procedures, is it the information that you just talked about, about the proper way to restrain? Do you get down to that level of detail in the procedures?
They'll have to identify the type of restraint they use, yes. It doesn't go into the explanation. They've been trained in those. It's...
Is that written anywhere, though?
They get handbooks on it.
Okay.
When they're trained. That it has pictures, they're, they practice those restraints.
Which we can note?
Right. It's the Nonviolent Crisis Intervention.
Right. So we can note that in the procedures as well?
Yes.
That we have that?
Yes.
Okay. Would it be possible for us to see the procedures next week? Would you be, have that done, you think?
I can do my best.
If not, but if we could, that would, I would appreciate being able to see that. Okay, thank you.
This is Cordasco.
Going back to the notification, again, I think this probably falls more into procedure rather than the actual policy. I think this is a difficult thing to express when you've actually had to be involved and report it. Do you think it could be a request that either they are accompanied by either the assistant principal or the principal when they're making that notification or having that communication with the parent? I just think that might be a real boost to the staff member that has to deliver that news.
We can certainly make that suggestion.
Okay.
Any other board member comments? I have to say, this is a, not a pleasant policy. And I think we, I think we all hope that this is the last resort, not, you know, that this is when we get to the, get to the final, you know, and as Mr. Fuentes pointed out, it's not just for specialized students, I mean, it's for the entire student population. You never know what you're going to have out there in that student population. We want to make sure that our staff members are safe, our students are safe, the student here is safe. I presume this has been through our lawyers, our lawyers have looked at this.
Three times.
Three times. And my understanding was, it came to the policy committee, and the policy committee asked that to go to CAC, that they get a chance to crack that. And so I think, I appreciate you and Mrs. Cook doing that, that we make sure we get their, get their input. And as you can tell, there's lots of, this is an emotional policy, so you have lots of board comments on this, and, you know, it's concerning. And, you know, one of the things we talked about, talked about here was some of the things that aren't in the policy, but they'll be in our procedure. And so I really want us to kind of flesh out some of the comments that have been here tonight and see if we really want to put those in policy to make sure that they are in procedure. I understand, you know, the 15 days from the VSB policy, that's way too long, five. My kid, five's way too long, too, but I can understand how it's not one because it happens at three in the afternoon, and it's a problem. But, and so I understand a reasonable period of time, but then I also understand as soon as possible, but neither one of those are defined, it's just kind of, this is as possible as we can get it. So it's, you know, it's a very touchy issue, I, the speakers we had tonight.
Really?
See, we had too much of the same types of humor about this.
It's a really touchy issue.
I knew exactly what she meant when she, when she said that. See, how do I keep going on with this now? I understand with the, with the speakers tonight, and, you know, uses your last resort, parental notification, you know, I understand the five days being too long, but, you know, if it happens on a Friday and then you got days, and so it's, it's...
You just pointed something out, too.
Not an easy policy.
This policy says five days for written notification. Is your procedure going to address the verbal?
No.
The procedures will address that.
I missed that. I'm sorry.
Yes.
So...
And the practice right now is that they do it as soon as they can. The current practice is they notify as soon as they can.
Okay.
And the fact of the matter is, a lot of, I mean, I just spoke with a workers' nurse today about something, and she said that the number one thing that they deal with is injury of teachers, and many times it's a assault situation. So this is to protect them as well, so...
Right. So I would just, I would just appreciate it if the administration take one more turn based upon the comments we had from the citizens tonight, some of the comments that you heard from the board members, Mr. Fuentes' question about the mechanical restraints, as soon as possible, then there's a reasonable period of time. Now, I did, I did also, the General Assembly required this, passive statutes required this?
The General Assembly has required the Board of Education to determine, to develop their regulations. That is still in process.
Okay. All right. Because I was, I was wondering why other school systems don't have a policy? Are we, are we out in front here? Is this where we are, or?
The Virginia guidelines were developed in 2009, and at that time, I think there were, there were quite a few divisions that did not have it, but there were quite a few that did at that point in time.
Right. I, one of the things which makes me a little nervous is I read a policy back here, it says legal references Code of Virginia 1950, but then it says as amended. Because I'm assuming that this whole policy has moved a little bit since 1950.
It was up to you.
Anyway, any other comments from board members? Do you understand what we're asking you to do?
Yes, sir.
Okay. 7.03 Superintendent Proposed 2016/2017 Capital Improvement Plan. Dr. Constantino?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, as you have discussed and directed, the budget timeline this year is different from previous years inasmuch as the board will concentrate in the fall solely on the CIP. To remind you of the timeline, tonight is the first of three meetings with regard to the CIP. We will present to you information about the CIP, changes in the CIP. We will also share some information with you regarding the facility study that you directed about a year or so ago, and we've given you a copy of that. And the good news is, we're not going to read it to you page by page, so...
Thank you.
But we give it to you for your information now, so that you have it through the course, through the discourse of your discussion. Our plan tonight is to simply share with you how we got to this initial recommendation and to allow you time to ask initial questions, to study these documents. There'll be a public hearing on the CIP at your meeting next week. You can continue that conversation. And the plan is, at the moment, for you to come back and approve a CIP to your liking, which is a little bit different than we've done in the past and a much better process. This also aligns us a little bit better with different agencies that request our CIP. We've been in a difficult position in the past where outside groups have wanted to see the CIP before the school board has. This puts the school board out in front. So Mrs. Burt is here this evening to take you through the document, what has changed in the document, how the facility study has directed some new thinking with regard to the capital improvement plan, and overall, we'll certainly take any questions that you have. You do have a copy of the PowerPoint in front of you, and...
Just one, so this presented to us first time tonight, there's a public hearing next week?
Yes.
We talk about it again next week?
Yes.
It comes to us for approval in December?
Yes.
That supports planning commission, county, city?
Yes.
Inclusion into their budget so that they understand what the capital requests are. Our old process, we waited until April, May, and that was...
Well, and then, yes. But in fairness to the board, there had been conversations in previous years about having specific conversations about the CIP. And while we started to do that, I don't know that we got to this level where we've devoted this much attention, this sole attention on one aspect. And that will finish the conversation for the CIP, so that in January, we will start with a focus on the operational budget, and that will take us through the spring. So you're correct.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, Dr. Constantino. I'm going to walk you through how we have developed the Superintendent's Proposed CIP for you this evening. In front of you, you do have several documents. You have a copy of the presentation. I've also given you an enlarged copy of the 10-year CIP plan, so you don't lose your eyesight looking at a smaller, big packet of documents. So as we get into the projects, you can refer to those documents.
We are getting older.
Just a reminder, the CIP is a plan, it is not a budget. The cost information is included for the first five years of the CIP from 2017 through 2021. The plan is reviewed and updated based on the most current information annually for facilities and changing programs, so we can make adjustments. Just a little historical trip for enrollment. As you can see, since 2006, our percentage of enrollment change has been a positive number for the last 11 years. Williamsburg-James City County has seen a growth of 1,483 students in that time period. We did do a facility condition study that was performed by Faithful &amp; Gould, who is an architectural engineering consulting firm. The FCI provides us with current assessment of all of our buildings and facilities. Faithful &amp; Gould report determines the condition of our building components, our HVACs, our roofs, our infrastructure components, including paint, tile, and carpeting, electrical and plumbing components. Ratings were determined for each of the facilities based on industry standards. Here's a look at how our school division fared. If you can refer to the bottom of the slide, that is the chart to the rating scale that is used. As you can see, excellent is 0 to 0.9, and good is .10 to .25. We were pleased to see that four of our schools are in good condition, based on this rating. 11 of the schools are in excellent condition, with an overall division rating that's excellent. I think this can be attributed to the fact that the school board has pushed forward the capital needs of the division over the recession period to the county and city, and they have been willing to fund projects to keep our buildings in good order. So an idea of what was included in the scope and excluded inside of the FCI Facility Condition Index was a Systems Condition Index, where they looked at our actual assets, our HVACs, our roofs, our plumbing, a Facility Condition Index, looking at the exterior of the buildings and the infrastructure, a review of maintenance, including staff and our maintenance cycles, the probable construction cost for system repairs and any upgrades or replacements that were identified, as well as a recommended timeline. What was not included were requests from principals and other division staff, maintenance staff recommendations, and any prior external engineer recommendations received by the There were two approaches that were recommended by Faithful &amp; Gould. One was a life cycle approach, and one was a component replacement approach. A life cycle approach replaces the entire asset at one time. It ensures that we have warranty coverage if there's a catastrophic failure, as well as maintains our current staffing levels in the maintenance department to service the assets that we have. A component replacement approach replaces the systems as needed, so if pieces of the systems fail, we would replace those items. It extends the refurbishment cycle over several years rather than doing the refurbishments all in one year, and it would require additional staff to support and maintain large assets if we did an entire component replacement. So an example of looking at a project that we had in our current fiscal year 16 CIP, on the left-hand side, we typically follow the life cycle replacement. So at Norwich, Norwich Elementary would have had a refurbishment coming up in fiscal year 18 with an estimated cost of $1.6 million. In the proposed change for the component replacements, Norwich would receive vinyl flooring and painting in fiscal year 21 for an estimated cost of a little over $1 million, and carpet in fiscal year 22 for an estimated cost of $289,819. So taking a look at what we currently do, our current replacement cycle is on the left-hand side, with roofs, regardless of shingle or metal, we replace anywhere between 20 and 30 years. HVAC systems, we replace every 20 years. And refurbishment for the entire school, the entire school would get carpet, tile, and painting every 14 years. What's being proposed in the replacement cycle is that we would maintain those life cycle approaches for roofs and HVAC systems, but we would move to a component replacement for carpet, tile, and paint. And that wouldn't be every eight years, it would allow the maintenance department to do an assessment of what needed to be replaced, so it may be a wing of a school instead of the entire school getting carpet all at the same time. It allows us to spread that out over multiple years. The Facility Condition Index, or Facility Condition Study, recommended an additional 15 trade staff in our maintenance department. And maintenance has identified the areas of need to support that proposal. The estimated annual recurring cost for those additional staff would be $1.1 million plus any tools or division vehicles that would be required to support them. So the assumptions that we made in our development of the proposed CIP, we are not recommending the additional 15 staff members that were recommended by the Facility Condition Index. We are proposing the acceptance of the component replacement for the refurbishment portion of the recommendation. Years beyond fiscal year 17 assume a 3% rate of escalation, and we do not include in the 10-year capital improvement plan elementary capacity adjustments. So this is where we have summarized the different projects that are needed throughout the division over the course of the next five years. And this is where you will need the details in the spreadsheet that's in front of you on the 11-by-17 paper.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Can you go back to the other slide, please?
Which one?
That one.
Okay.
The premise of our consultants in adding the 15 additional staff members was based upon, if we went on a, we did a component replacement?
Component replacement for all items, all assets, HVACs, roofs, everything.
And it's a great question, and I want to distinguish for the board that we have major issues such as HVAC systems, and we have refurbishments, paint, tile, carpet. The board has traditionally used this life cycle approach. And in order to maintain the consultant's component replacement approach, we would need more people to maintain the system as opposed to replacing the system. So we're juxtaposing the cost, the recurring cost of employees against the cost of a total system change-out for certain projects, understanding that other projects like painting and tile and carpet and minor refurbishments could be a component process. So it's a, it's a dual-capacity look at the CIP where that's not been the way the division has normally done it.
It was just, it's a hybrid.
It's a hybrid, yes.
Yeah. Mix and match.
So I just wanted to make sure that, I want to elevate that, because I want to make sure that as we do that, that the maintenance component for the painting, carpet, and tile is not going to really be a hidden burden that we weren't really able to carry through.
It's not, and that's, that's a good point. It's not that it's a hidden burden. It's, it's a question of, we have been doing it all at one time because it has been a life cycle approach. If we can split those projects up, first of all, we can be more efficient and more cost-effective over time. There have been some years where we've had giant spikes in CIP requests, and I, we're trying to avoid that, looking at the funding that's being laid out over the next four or five years, trying to be cautious. years, trying to be cognizant of how are we going to maintain excellence in good buildings and stay within parameters of funding. So this hybrid approach is not, it's not suggesting that one thing is more important or less important, it's simply a question of dollars and cents and staffing to maintain what we can maintain and replace what it costs too much money to maintain.
Thank you.
Are you recommending any additional staff, or at all are you just saying we're not going to do the 15?
It's possible that as we may, we may come forward to the board with additional operations staff. Want to be clear that I'm not recommending 15 additional maintenance positions. Largely will depend on where all of this ends up. And it actually puts us in a little bit better position because knowing what the approved CIP is will help inform staffing requests to the board when we get to the operational budget. So I don't want to say yes, I don't, I don't know at the moment, but it's possible.
Well, and I do have a concern because I believe that a lot of our operations people, HVAC, etc., they're longtime employees, or am I incorrect in that?
Yes, they are.
They're, they're, so, you know, they know a lot, they've been here quite a bit of time, I'm sure some of them are looking at retirement, and so just planning for that as the, as the future unfolds. So that's why I asked the question.
Ms. Bird, I hope I didn't interrupt your momentum there.
No, you're good, you're fine.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
So I apologize, I guess I'm going to have to go through remedial training because I'm not quite understanding the life cycle component thing. I mean, I understand the term, I understand the term "life cycle," but is this what, I always thought that what we did was is that we looked at the different projects and we estimated, for example, the HVAC, that that had a certain life, and we kind of put that on the CIP, and we kind of, and then sometimes we'd have to kick it down the can, kick the can down another year, whatever. But, for example, you gave this example of Norwich, and for some reason, it's not making too much sense to me. You have the refurbishment in FY18 as being $1.6 million? And then if you do a type of component, it's cheaper if you put it out further and break it into two jobs?
The side on the left may not be mirrored to the items that are being replaced on the right. The left would replace the entire tile and carpet and paint in the school building at Norwich. The right, there may be items that are out past your 10 years that add up to all of those projects. So based on the Facility Condition Index, they say rather than doing it all in one year, we can spread out and do different wings of the elementary school, or do different components at different times because based on their assessment, they all don't need to be done in one year.
And you try to level load your capital plan over...
Right, over the course of time.
The one thing we haven't had before this year is this study that gives us more information and better information than we've had in the past. So we feel confident that projects such as this one, and there could be something coming in FY23 or '24 in Norwich, rather than going in with a $1.6 million price tag, which might fall in the same year as a $5 million HVAC system, which then puts this pressure on the CIP that we can't afford. We're trying to maintain excellent and good buildings, replace what we can't manage, and component replace what we can manage.
So an example would be the school, one wing doesn't get as much traffic, so they came in and recommended, replace this section here, leave this one go, you're good for another 10 years on that, is that what I'm hearing?
Correct.
You're calling that component?
Yes.
That's what you're calling?
We're not necessarily going in and ripping up every tile and replacing.
Okay, but we're also, they're also taking into consideration, the guy's here, while he's here, you can do that extra wing cheaper.
Yes.
I mean, they took that into consideration also at the same time.
Yes.
Okay, now, I'm with you now. Just, this didn't add up, and then the next page, if you go to the next one, the two charts look identical to me, except for one is 14 years and one is eight years. And that, so that one actually looks like it's going to, the one on the right, looks like it's going to question more because every eight years...
And it may not actually be every eight years, but it's, it's changing the approach from doing everything all at once, and it gives the maintenance staff the ability to assess what the condition of those items are and decide whether it needs to be in there or not as a replacement.
Okay, all right, thank you, you cleared it up.
And who, who is, who is keeping the records? Who is making sure that with the component replacement cycle, that, okay, it's, oh my God, it's been 16 years, you know, who is keeping track of all of that?
All of the information will be entered into the system, and so there is a way for Mr. Snipes and his staff to make sure that we can call up the last time every building was looked at and what was looked at.
Okay, so there's constant record-keeping and that kind of thing?
With this, with this, the input of this information into the system, we now have baseline data that is going to take us so that we'll know every year what we did and what we've done.
Okay.
And that goes to my point, and I apologize for being out of order here, but what she just pointed though is you replace all the hallway, but the guy says, you can leave that one alone, and then like five years from there, you know, everybody's like, why didn't they do this then? And I think that's what you're getting at, right, that all of a sudden that's forgotten?
Yeah, just making sure that we've got a constant tickler file going on.
And, and I want, we want to, we want the board to be clear that this is a different approach than you have taken for a long, long time. It is not replacing things until they absolutely, doing an assessment and saying you really don't need to replace it as opposed to, oh, it's 14 years, let's just replace it. It's helping with evening the expenditures over time and making better decisions about major systems that we know we can't maintain, or may be coming to the end of a warranty life cycle, or may, you know, parts of those systems that are just not available and costly, et cetera, et cetera.
So I've summarized the five years CIP and which individual schools will receive different replacements. This is the life cycle approach. So we will maintain roofs, HVAC replacements, and our security entrance redesigns, all on a life cycle approach. So over the course of the five years, these schools will receive those updates. The total cost in the five-year CIP is $14.1 million, or 51% of our proposed CIP. Moving forward to the items that would be in a component replacement, we would look at chillers, boilers, hot water heaters, windows, exterior renovations, electrical replacements. This portion of that is $3.4 million, or 12% of the five-year CIP. These are projects that are recommended by our WJCC staff as well as the Facility Condition Index.
So that's $3.3 million of all, through all four teams?
Yes. Additionally, this is a continuation, so we have walk-in refrigerator or freezer replacements, exterior repairs, playground replacements, bus loop canopy, equipment that's needed for our maintenance staff. Refurbishments, those will be on the component cycle. So that cost of these projects is $7.4 million, or 28% of this CIP. Finally included in your five-year CIP is some high school capacity expansion design issues that we see coming on the horizon. We see it's necessary due to increase in enrollment and projected enrollment, that our high schools will be over capacity, so we require some expansion. So in the fifth year of your CIP, there is a design piece for that at a $2.6 million, or 9% of your five-year CIP. So looking at fiscal year, year over year, over the next five years, we are forecasting a projected CIP of $27.4 million. The CIP Review Committee strived very hard in fiscal year 17 through '20 to ensure that we maintained and stayed within what was included in the city and county approved CIP. So we wanted to try to make sure that we've maintained funding levels that were within what was in that approved plan. Again, some upcoming meetings, November 17th will be...
With that said, does that, what you just said, working to that, does that force the year '21 to be that, to jump like that?
A portion of that is because of the design of the middle school, or the high school expansion, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
So we have other projects that are outside of what we traditionally do with replacements and HVACs.
Conversely, does that force the 2020 to go down?
It could, I mean, there's, we've identified where the projects can fall based on the expertise of the individuals that assisted us in the development of the CIP. So of course, you know that this year, you're approving the 17 plan. Going forward, there could be adjustments that are required based on needs of, and identify needs within the division.
2020's a ways away.
Also looking at life cycle of big-ticket items, and not wanting to go beyond life cycles and warranties, and that could have some, that has some effect on how this lays out.
Yes, a couple of things. In terms of looking at those employees, I'm hopeful that the, the county especially will, will complete their public facilities master's plan, which was actually required in the 2009 comp plan and has not been done. They are the major funders of the system. I wondered if we could work a little bit more in terms of shared services, if it does indeed point to the fact that a certain number of employees in certain trades and disciplines would be necessary to handle projects on both ends, if that might not be something that could be worked on in terms of collaboration. Secondly, I certainly would love if we would start to move into that situation where we are hiring additional employees and really looking to keep an operational staff busy more than just, you know, certain times. If we could look at offering apprenticeships or internships to anybody that's in school like New Horizons so that we can actually give experience to students who might, might be studying that. I understand that there'd be some challenges or difficulties, but it seems to me that, number one, it certainly is a pride of ownership situation when you're working on your own school, and secondly, we're putting skin in the game and giving the kids actual work experience that could then be translated into a job upon completion of their education. So I'd certainly like to make that as a suggestion.
There's probably employees now in operations that did that at some point. Then that's how they got started working for us many, many years ago. So it probably would be a good idea to implement again, so.
Capture the knowledge of those...
Yeah, I do worry about the, about the years that a lot of our staff has been there.
Yeah.
And, you know, they know a lot, and I think, I mean, I'm sorry, it went out, but I do think that we, we are to be congratulated as a division for the way that we have kept our buildings. You know, I do like this approach in that we're not spending money that doesn't necessarily need to be spent. It's just very important to me that we maintain, you know, the standards that we have now. I do think that that, I mean, it has helped get the ratings that we have, and that saves money in the long run as well. And so, you know, I'm glad to know that we're putting processes in place to make that happen, so.
Anyone else? Okay.
Joe? We're still on the CIP?
Yes, sir.
I thought you had more slides, I thought. We're talking to this, or did you already?
We can. I gave you highlights of it so that you could review and have discussion next week if you'd prefer.
The only question I have is, you know, the, the middle school, you know, I don't see that on the plan for, is that because it's already, does that include it in the '16 budget?
Phase one.
Phase one.
Yes, construction is included in fiscal year 16.
Which is...
The plan that was...
Which is 15, 16.
Yeah, this year's plan.
Which is one we're in right now.
Yep.
Okay, okay, that explains, thank you.
I have a question.
Mr. Nichols?
On the CIP for Stonehouse, is that for '17? The bus loop canopy and the sports light, sports field light?
The bus loop canopy is included in the proposed plan in 2021, and the sports field lighting in 2026.
It's been a while. Just want to point out that Stonehouse is 15 years old, and that canopy has been there as long as the school.
That is the truth.
Any other comments?
The, one, I think, I think kind of to where Mr. Fuentes was going with the Norwich Elementary, when you had, it comes up as .19, which is probably the worst-good school we've got. That, and then, and so then we come over here to the life cycle cost where we had money in '18, but we pushed out to '21 and '22. And then I go back to the, our legal sheets here, and I see that we're actually doing HVAC and roof in '17. So that's probably where the .19 for the, for Norwich comes in, right? Is where the...
That's a partial driver of that rating, yeah.
Yeah, which the HVAC's in the, in the roof.
Right.
I look forward to kind of delving into this, and kind of hits me where in my wheelhouse, I'm kind of looking forward to getting into that. One of the things I, that I'm not going to apologize for is how good our, is the condition our schools have been kept in. I think that's this board, I think that's the supervisors, that's the city, I think it's everybody who's involved in investing in our schools can, can take pride in that. Certainly our maintenance staff and the yeoman's work that we ask them to do day after day, year after year, seemingly not giving them much help in doing that. So I certainly appreciate that. And I really think that it gets down to it that when you have, when you have buildings that the community's proud of, when you have buildings that the students are, look forward to coming to, that equals student achievement, that equals pride in the community and shows, and shows a community that invests appropriately in its future, so. Anyway, we'll talk about more about this next week?
Sure.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Sir?
Just invite the board to, as you review, this process is for you to get into it and look at it. If you have questions, if you are, are looking for information as to why certain things are the way they are, please email us or call us, whatever lead time we can get to make sure all of your questions get answered, would be appreciated.
Okay, Mr. Fuentes?
Yes, the bus loop's canopy, I don't know whether we'll be able to get it answered tonight, but it seemed, I seem to recall that was always on the CIP for different schools?
Yep, DJ, I think it was...
Yeah, did they get done, or did they just fall off this list? I mean, if I could, I just was curious, I mean, I know that we were trying to...
It's hopeful that Mr. Snipes has an answer to that question. He seems like he knows.
The DJ bus loop canopy is in the design phase for fiscal year 16, which is now.
Okay.
We're designing that, and we're working on some things with the, with the county about how we can get that designed. Now, the bus loop canopy, as you can, as Mr. Nichols said, has been in for a long time, but it, you know, it got pushed this year, so.
Oh, it was, so the bus loop canopy was supposed to be done at Stonehouse, you're saying, and it's not getting done?
I can't, I can't tell you when it was supposed to be done. I know it has been in for a number of years.
Right, and then the one at DJ, you're saying the design's getting done?
Right.
But then, in that case, shouldn't that somehow show up on...
That's on the '16 budget.
That's for last year's budget.
That's this year's budget.
That's this year's.
It's on this year's approved budget, but that's the design.
It's, no, it's just being, I'm just letting you know, it's in, it's in the works now. It's not just design, it is in the works.
Design and construction.
Design and construction, okay, I'm sorry, I just heard design, the construction part.
Can't capitalize on that.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, I didn't know if there was any other schools that had, I thought there was more than just those schools though, that, that had that on the...
Feels like James River had some bus loop issue.
Yeah, I thought, okay, sorry, okay.
Collected, I collected, thank you.
Lady multitasking.
Mr. Kennedy asked me to turn the AC down if I came up here.
I know, it's a little chill.
Yeah, look at Betsy back here. Anything else on the CIP? Yeah, look at Betsy back here. Anything else on the CIP? Great. Thank you. Appreciate it. Look forward to getting into that. That brings us to eight point zero one, Portrait of a Graduate Class of two thousand and fifteen.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is an information discussion item. Last year, we began a different process of beginning to share data and analysis. If you recall, we began with Portrait of a Graduate of the Class of two thousand and fourteen and then followed up with additional information about student performance. The board's reaction to that was very positive, and so we're doing the very same thing again. And with us this evening is Mr. Thorpe, Director of Special Programs, who will take us through part one of the data presentation this year, Portrait of a Graduate Class of two thousand and fifteen.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Constantino. We are very excited tonight to present the Class of two thousand and fifteen installment of Portrait of a Graduate. And you also have an infographic that can tell you a little bit more about how our Class of two thousand and fifteen achieved on their way to graduation. So on this first slide, you can see that over ninety-one percent of our eight hundred and fifty-one students graduated on time. Over sixty-two, or almost sixty-two percent of our students took the ACT, or, excuse me, the SAT, and almost forty percent took the ACT, along with over seventy percent of our graduates taking at least one AP exam.
What percentage?
Excuse me, over, over seventy percent.
Wow, that's pretty impressive.
Yes, ma'am. You can see that right here, we had, our wheel in the middle shows that we had ninety-one point zero seven percent graduating on time. We had ninety-four percent of cohort completion, and our dropout rate was actually down two point nine percent from the previous year to one point six percent. And our one point six percent, that's pretty small in comparison to Virginia's average of five point two percent dropout rate. WJCC graduates are continuing to do a great job with their, with their SAT and reading. And while SAT reading scores across the nation went down four out of the five last, four out of the last five years, in Virginia and in WJCC, our mean scores in reading have actually gone up four out of the past five years. And we are, as you can see, continuing to outpace Virginia and the nation. And the same can be said in mathematics.
How's that compared to our local?
I have that information. And by local, do you mean?
This one.
Sure. We had, York County had, York County's mean was five hundred and thirty-two on the critical reading and five hundred and twenty-six on the math.
That's all that matters. Don't worry. Spoken like an engineer.
So with the ACT, we actually had, we actually had two hundred and seventy-nine students who took the ACT. And on the left-hand side here, you can see what our mean scores were on these four batteries. And there was a max score of thirty-six, a scale score of thirty-six on each of these batteries of the ACT. And then here on the right-hand side, you can see the percentage of our WJCC test takers who met each of the four benchmarks.
So the, I'm, I'm sorry.
Sure.
The left is our average?
That's right. Our average on each of the batteries of the ACT.
Is there a reason why reading is so far out of scale at the ears?
We actually.
Is that just me?
It's interesting. We actually, we actually grew a good bit in, in reading last year. We actually went up one, one scale point from the previous year. So we were, we're definitely moving in that category.
I really like orange, too.
Yes, I see that. Obviously, it's a good color.
But the eighty-seven, sixty-three to eighty-seven is?
Might be closer. Twenty-three point six and twenty-four point three.
In terms of advanced placement exams, we had eighty-five point five percent of our students take, at Jamestown, meet a scale or meet a score of three, four, or five. And that's the, the common benchmark for success with AP exams. And at Lafayette, sixty-five point nine percent of our AP exam takers met that benchmark of scale scores of three, four, or five. And at War Hill, that was fifty-seven point one percent. And so for an average in WJCC, that was seventy-two point two percent. In terms of career and techno educa, excuse me, career and technical education, we had four hundred and twenty out of eight hundred and thirteen of our students who enrolled that earned at least one CTE certifications. And you can see along the right-hand side some of the certifications that were awarded.
So those eight hundred and thirteen, so is that to say that four hundred and seventeen did not earn?
Yeah, five hundred and seventeen did not. That's correct.
And they, and they couldn't, I guess?
That's correct.
Not just sophomores or juniors, but that's just?
Well, in that eight hundred and thirteen would be people who met the vocational requirements, right, as, as opposed to getting certification. So you have two, really two segments of.
Right. This is in, in terms of our CTE, this is our total number of students, not just, not just our Class of two thousand and fifteen graduates.
Right. Okay.
Because we do, okay, let me go back to that one. We are still, all our students that are, finish those courses, take the certification exam, right?
They do not. And we actually have some issues with that. They don't always have appropriate testing to give. If there's any special education component, that's something that we talked about in our committee. So, and there's actually no requirement that they do. So.
I thought we were paying for?
Uh-uh. No, that's old news. We could do better in that, absolutely. Once in the recession, recall, we took out the funding for AP and for the certification. The first year, we said we'd keep the, the certification going, but then in subsequent years, that was just not possible.
Right.
I think we might want, I don't want to bring too much attention to it because I do think that we are paying for some of those certifications. I thought that was the one thing we didn't stop, but maybe, um.
First year, we did, we did say we'd keep that, but then we dropped it.
Because we kept going deeper into the recession.
Right.
Okay.
And that's what some of what their, some of New Horizons Foundation helps to fund and give honorariums. It's one of the reasons why I was hopeful that our foundation would be doing something other than innovating teaching grants, because I think it does not address some of the needs that could be addressed. I mean, these are literally students that can hopefully walk out of high school and get a job. If we're not encouraging them to earn the certification and/or helping them do that if they need it, then I would argue that perhaps they've wasted their time where they are. If they can't get a job, that's a waste of time.
But I think it's a, it's a tough set, it's a tough thing because you can make the same argument for a child doing the AP, which we no longer are funding either, the AP test.
The AP test is not going to give you a job. It's going to give you credits in college.
It is going to give you college credit.
Right, which is, it's very different. It's very different. Because what we're talking, basically with continuing, with, with CTE, we're talking about kids who that is not necessarily in their track. And that is the option that they have to actually get a job. So I'm sorry, I would beg to differ that that would be the same. I can certainly understand that the hardship may be the same, but I don't believe that the outcome is the same.
Right. I'm talking about the amount, how we, on a budgetary note, how we make those decisions. We've made those in, together in the past, where we've said we were going to fund AP test and we were going to fund the certification.
Mr. Thorpe?
Very happy to report that fourteen point four million dollars in scholarships were awarded to our Class of two thousand and fifteen graduates. That's a, an impressive, an impressive sum. And so in our efforts to equip and empower our students with career-ready and college standards, you can see that we had eighty-four percent of our, of our students that were headed to a two- or four-year college and another nine percent that are headed into the workforce and four percent headed to the military.
Well, I'd say the military is part of the workforce, too.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, I would agree. And so we also have video that we'd like to show you as a way to celebrate our Class of two thousand and fifteen.
Before you do, can I ask a question?
Sure.
The scholarships that were, that were referenced, were they actually, so I know that sometimes, like, for instance, we sort of double count because our governor's school people get all of these options given to them in terms of scholarships. But obviously, if they're given fifty thousand dollars' worth of scholarships for three schools, that's not going to be something that they can utilize. So were these actually ones that were awarded in particular for a, you know, and taken, or were these just the general total? Do you have any idea?
I know we've got some detailed information on our website, but I'd be happy to get that information to you. That sounds like information we'd want to know.
Okay.
This is possible before, I'm sorry, at some point, can you send us that slideshow? I did not catch the first slide, all the statistics that I wanted to get off the first slide. Could you, okay, thank you.
We'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
That's our presentation that we have for you. Do you have any questions for us?
For members?
Maybe did that.
Okay.
All good. Thank you, Mr. Thorpe. It's, it's interesting to, interesting how all three of the high schools are very equivalent as far as on-time graduation rates, cohort completion rates. I think that's a, a good thing and dropout rates.
Got a lot of great work, a lot of teamwork happening to make that, make that come about.
And while it's a Class of two thousand and fifteen, the, the Class of two thousand and fifteen was in kindergarten one time. So this is not just a, a discussion of our high school students, it's the, our high school teachers and staff, although they should be very proud of it, too. It's the entire school system and the entire, the entire school division which contributes to that. So, thank you. Brings us to nine point zero one, Personnel Actions. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move the Personnel Actions as printed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Serza?
Mr. Fuentes?
Aye.
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Nichols?
Aye.
Mrs. Cardasco?
Aye.
Ms. Emanuel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye. Ten point zero one, Board Member Comments. Any Board Members have any comments this evening?
Today is Marine Corps Birthday. November tenth, seventeen seventy-five, and eighteen days later, they created the Chaplain Corps to take care of him.
Maybe it should have been opposite.
Two hundred and forty-five.
Semper five.
Semper five.
Any other Board Member comments? Ms. Larson?
Thank you. Well, tomorrow's Veterans Day, so happy Veterans Day, remember, there are veterans. Lafayette High School starts the first round of playoffs on Friday night at seven o'clock.
Football team?
Football, yes, thank you. And so November thirteenth, I don't know that I, whether or not I said that. I know that Ms. Taylor spoke earlier this evening, who was the newly-elected school board representative from the Berkeley District. I wanted to welcome her. And also Mr. Beers.
Me, Ms. Young?
Young.
Young, I'm sorry, Ms. Young. I, I don't know if Ms. Taylor is here or not. I apologize. Ms. Young, I apologize about that. And Dr. Beers is here as well. So, and then just wanted to announce that next week is our Virginia School Boards Conference, where it's a very busy week for several of us. So Dr. Constantino is presenting on Tuesday, correct? And then we're presenting, excuse me?
Tuesday is the foundation presentation.
Right. So we're presenting Tuesday and Wednesday, and then full slate Wednesday, afternoon, Thursday, and then Friday. And so we want to welcome all of our fellow school board members that will be here in town, and hope all of you are planning to attend as well. So that is all.
Great. Any other Board Member comments? Mr. Fuentes?
Yeah, regarding, I want to make sure we have this discussion because I guess the planning for the meetings, I mean, I guess we're setting up the meetings for next year and hopefully we're on the calendar. And as a reminder, this year was the city term, next year's, I mean, if we're on schedule, then next year. And I really don't care for city, county next year. I just want to pick one place, although I don't think Stryker is ready. So we're going to end up back over at the county building, if, correct, based on the, our plan, right? That's our plan for next year.
Yeah, we're, we're working through that. We might, we might switch to Stryker at the academic year, because it should be open in the summer. So we'll look, we'll look into that. So instead of switching on calendar years, we might switch on academic years. So in?
Yeah, it might make sense to do that.
That's, I mean, I'm, I just want to pick one place. And what we were doing was yearly before doing that.
Yeah, the only, we'll have to talk about that because I, because I kind of like this for work sessions versus the dais at the county or the?
That's a decision that the board needs to have.
Right.
The whole board needs to decide where we should be meeting. Frankly, I don't like this location for the meeting. I don't feel like it's transparent to the community, you know.
I would agree. And they can't watch it live either.
Yeah, not the, just the whole atmosphere here, I think it's, it's, we're, plus having two locations. The, the whole two-location thing really kind of, I was just pick one place so everyone knows that's where we go, that's where we meet.
I appreciate your comments on that. This building will be torn down sometime next year anyways. So.
What's that?
This building's not going to exist for much longer.
Yeah, and so it doesn't even matter anyway. So, yeah.
Well, I.
You can still meet here.
Just have a tent.
I do appreciate that we've met here. I think for staff purposes, it's helped. I understand, though. I know that you and I've talked, in fact, we've talked at like five forty-five, where are we going tonight? I know there's been some confusion there, so I certainly do understand that. But I do like this location. It's none, none of my concern. But I do want to say I believe that, that Ronnie's been working to try to make it so that we're feeding live and so that he, he was working on that aspect of it, so that it would, people would be able to be able to see them meeting as it was happening. So I want, just wanted to point that out.
Ms. Cordasco?
I just don't think that people can hear as well.
I just don't think that people can hear as well. I also don't like having my back to people. I'd rather have my back to the wall when, like we are in a building app and we were in Stryker. So I would completely agree that I don't believe that this is the, the best location. And quite honestly, the people that we're having the meeting for is the public, not the staff, nor the board members. So I would, I would agree that that's probably a consideration that, that needs to be, to be had. There are many, many people who do watch the meetings live, and I think it's important that that is not just something that's being worked on, but something that is happening. Also think that whenever possible, we need to try to keep from conflicting with the board meetings of the county. I think it's important that people who might want to have something to say for both bodies are able to do that. So that's, that's just, that's just a consideration.
Okay. Any other board member comments? Coming off, going off of Mrs. Larson's point, Lafayette Football is on, has their playoffs on Friday. The War Hill and Jamestown volleyball teams are deep into regions, and I think Jamestown's playing tonight, so. Tomorrow is Veterans Day. Thank you, Mr. Nichols and Mr. Fuentes for your service, and for all the other veterans who were here or watching us here, either here or on the webcast. There are Veterans Day activities in several of our schools tomorrow, so I appreciate the, our schools recognizing the contributions of our, of our veterans. As we go in towards the end of the school year, there are lots of holiday concerts and festivities. Check the website. I trust that if you go to those, you will be duly impressed by the talents of our students in those activities. Anything else? Upcoming meetings, next, November 17th, next Tuesday at 6:00, we are here for closed session. Does that move for, don't we have some other things we're doing before that?
Yes.
So we.
That will be changed.
That will be changed.
Updated.
We go to closed session. I think we're looking at 4:30 right now for some student discipline, and then 6:00 for personnel. At 6:30, we have a public hearing on the proposed CIP, and the, the regular meeting of the school board will follow immediately after the public hearing on November 17th here. December 15th, our last meeting of the calendar year, closed session starts here, Blair, at 6:00, and then the work session and action items is at 6:30. And I think we know what we're doing on next Tuesday, Janet, right?
Yes, sir.
And without objection, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.